We're live here at the Montegoal City Council Meeting. We are going to be going on in the next few minutes. Everybody is welcome to get on, sit back, and get ready for the meeting.
Okay, it's now six o'clock. The Montegoal City Council Meeting takes order. It's August the twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. So we will do a roach hall, and we will do the prayer and the pledge. Nate?
Here.
Alan?
Jessica?
Here.
Doran?
Here.
Alan. We're all present. Will everyone please stand? Matt, would you come up through the permit, please? You come up to the podium, please.
This is prayer. Kind of grace of heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity that you've given us today to assemble together. Lord, we thank you for this town and this great country in which we live. Lord, I pray today that you continue to bless this city, Lord, bless our country, Lord, and I pray that you bless each and every one of us individually, that we can be in your favor and doing your work and being in your will. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Jessica, will you lift some flags, please?
To the ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Next, we'll have the approval of the City Council Meeting in July the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. You have those in your pockets there. Do you have any changes, revisions? Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next, we're going to do the order a little bit different. I know Matt is here from Signature. Matt, would you like to come up? I think you want to present the town with a check, you and your wife, for the playground over there. If you can explain a little bit about it and what they did, we appreciate that. And I think you're going to have an annual event, if I'm not mistaken, it's what you're looking at, right, sir?
Absolutely. So we spent a lot of hours just kind of pulling some things together. The goal that we always have is to bring more into our community and support our community in any way we can. I recently took Signature Healthcare Montegoal over two years ago as CEO for that facility. And ever since, my goal was to be better in our city and be a support system, but also an equal partner. We are one of the largest employers, or largest employers in the ground, now for that way. Except the school system, but we definitely want to be a valuable asset to our community and do everything we can for support. So we did a Jeep invasion, which hopefully didn't inconvenience anyone too much. But that goal was to raise money for our community, but also for our facilities. We continue to revolutionize the way healthcare is given. And that's my goal as a longtime member of this community and this town. And that we continue what we do. My wife, Amanda, as well, she's a supporter of what we're doing. Through our event that we've done, we was going to originally do a check, we're actually going to give a thousand dollar cash donation to the city.
Thank you. We'll give this to David. She'll take it. And this is a thousand dollars that will go to the playground out here. So David, here's the cash. You can count it there, but you'll be sure to put in the bank tomorrow. But we really appreciate it, and it was a joint effort. And you did say you would like to make this an annual event. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll just go ahead and pencil that in, and hopefully it can work. And there was some really nice Jeeps over there. I mean, these are Jeeps anywhere, I guess, from a hundred and twenty, and maybe even more, but there were some really nice Jeeps.
And so we'll also be doing other events to be able to support the community as well and giving monetary donations back to our community and all that.
Well, before you leave, I will let you know, of course, we'll talk about it a little bit, Jessica will, but I need, we'd also mention the, was it trunk and trees? This is going to be, we're going to do that in conjunction with the school this year on the twenty-seventh. So when you get with us, we'll get you that calendar, too, and you can get us your calendar. But thank you, we appreciate the donation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll get them out. Another thing before we do reports tonight, utility reports, we do have Travis Wilson here, and he's going to do a fifteen-minute presentation. Then after that, at the latter part, citizens can be heard, they will be, one time a person will be heard for three minutes because there's a lot of information that will be coming out there. This is being recorded, so you can watch it on YouTube. And any questions you've had from that point in time, submit those, and we'll get you answers to them. But since Travis is going to do, did you say about fifteen minutes tonight? Travis, I think we'll have this on the board here. And that will be, of course, we record our meetings, so you can go back to the YouTube channel, Instagram, Michelle, and they'll be able to watch it as well. So that way you can pull it up yourself. And all of our meetings are done that way. So we just wanted to let you know, just so we know, and that everybody can do what they need to tonight. All right, next, we'll start with police report. I think we have Mr. Company here tonight. Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. About a short and sweet, for the month of August, we had three arrests, two males, one female. Can't give the stats on the drug cases due to the waiting for the lab results to come back. That's all I have for the police report.
And thank you for supporting, I know that you guys have also been helping the fire department and, of course, the volunteers with the big fest and the trucks and for the events. And we will need to, tonight, when we do the truck and treasure retreats over at the school, to help with that. But we'll get that information, too, because it's not till October the twenty-seventh, but we'll go ahead and note that if you don't mind. And Jared's not feeling well, from what I understand, he's at the hospital, but he's at the doctor today, so just telling him, he said, we'll check in on him soon. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
You have any questions for Don?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next, fire department and codes. Travis, you're up.
Hey, man. They've earned eleven calls so far for the month of August. I've got a couple things to go over, you can say, on the fire side. We've used about ten thousand gallons of water. There's three insurance recovery claims that I've submitted. Engine two was the engine that I mentioned, the lighting, the emergency lighting on, Brendan Mount, been there and repaired it. They found a battery issue in doing all this. So he repaired that, that was another eighteen hundred dollars that we didn't plan for, I just gave Deb the bill for that. We hosted the annual pump testing, that's for the NFP and ISO for your annual pump test. We hosted it in Montegoal, and there's about four departments that come. The new truck, engine one, had some issues, it failed the pump test, but they're working to repair it. It was a crossover and a valve that was damaged. We don't know what happened, why it happened, but they're working on that right now as we speak. That will probably, more than likely, be warranty work, from what I'm understanding. The ISO inspector, Mr. Mark Ali, called me about two weeks ago, about a week and a half ago, and said that they will be here, they're doing an ISO inspection on us and Swanee. So I'm trying to get everything, all the reports and records around for it, get the trucks ready to go, not get hurt back from him, so I don't know. I guess kind of the way it goes, I don't know when he's projecting, but we're trying to get ready. The hose that I had mentioned, we talked back and forth a couple times on the fire hose. I had to open three bids, you know, try to get three bids on that hose for myself to turn into dead. The lowest bid, I think, was nine thousand and some change. I'd give that to Deb today, and that's ordered, so.
This is one you have to do, the fire truck, who's been working on it a while?
The guys have been working on painting hydrants. We've got probably around fifty done so far. I talked to Keith today about the repair stuff. We're having issues with parts and finding parts to order to, I think, we had twenty-something that was actually needed and need repaired.
Twenty-three, weren't you?
I think so. So we're working, working on trying to find parts for that, that's still on the agenda. A few of them have been fixed, but I mean, the ones we're having to chase parts for, it's hard to get those checked off. The guys have attended six separate trainings over the month. Nine of the guys has achieved their state certifications for extrication. And I think we had like six of the guys re-certified. We're working on CPR program. Andrew White's got his instructor, so that's going to be an in-house thing now for our CPR. Memorial Church donated a cooking stove to the fire department this month, so we appreciate that donation.
You got your ice machine down there, too?
Yes, the ice machine's down there and hooked up and working. So the code side is on the back page, you're going to flip over. There's three complaints addressed this month. I'm still working on two regarding abandoned vehicles. There was two follow-up visits from previous complaints. One of them was on North Bluff, and the other one was on the other side of, over by the church on the other side of town, with some trash issues. Several food truck permits has been issued. We reviewed a couple of previous complaints, and I've got a file on those for the findings on the previous complaints, and a couple of them was actually follow-up complaints. So I'm out on that.
Just, anyone? So the schooling that you're going to at Swanee is, which one?
That was extrication.
Okay.
Yep.
How many fire hydrants do we have?
There's two hundred and nine, ten hundred and twelve in town.
Two twelve, I think.
Two twelve.
They're on the GI system now.
So it'll take a while to get them all done.
Yep, yep.
We also have got a donor, I mentioned, you're working within a window, too, to get them all painted, I think they're all, you've got the guys working.
They're working, they're averaging about ten, ten a day, something like that, that they're trying to get done.
Where's the CPR classes going to be?
At Montegoal. We're going to actually, Andrew got his instructor. So it's going to be about fifty dollars a person to get CPR on bloodborne pathogens, or we could get an instructor certified for thirty-eight dollars. So we've got an instructor certified, and we're working on, we're going to hopefully use some donation money and actually get back to the community and try to buy some mannequins and stuff, because you have to have mannequins in curriculum. And then once we get all of our guys certified, then we'll open it up to the town and actually into the community for civic organizations, church groups, stuff like that, for CPR classes.
Travis, is this the hose we spoke about several months ago that was missing?
This is. I started out before the new physical, and I told you there was, I think, three or four sections that failed. So it needed to be replaced, and I just waited till after July one to do it. ISO kind of rushed that along a little bit, because I was going to try to split the order.
Yep.
And it kind of needs to be done all at once to get it on the truck.
With codes enforcement, whatever happened with the Rodney and the complaint that was filed?
So I followed up on the code side, and the findings on a follow-up complaint was one regarding a fence that was, he presented the wrong direction. So I followed up in chapter seven of the city code, the municipal code. Under seven oh three, this actually goes into landscaping, it was the fence and the bushes, the shrubs. There are dead shrubs down there. The shrubs obviously need to be played, so it's just the wrong time of the year to replant shrubs. So, you know, you can't really hold anybody to replant shrubs in the middle of summer. So we'll cover the shrubs first. And there's pictures of all this stuff. If anybody would like to review this, this is just what I've put together and found so far. And then the fence also falls under the landscaping provisions on section seven fifteen. Says, as a general standard, section four of this provision says, "The finisher decker inside of the fence shall face outward, visible from the public right of way or the adjoining property." So I've got pictures of the fence that I've taken here, as well as the shrubs. So that was the two follow-ups that I was working on for the, for the complaint on that side of it.
When the car complaint, was there a junkyard?
Yeah, so the junkyard and the abandoned vehicles, I'm waiting on a response to see if, the original business permit in twenty thirteen, he was opening up a repair shop and a truck stop, a rest stop. So now we need to decipher if this is a junkyard, or this is a repair shop. If it is a repair shop, how long does he have to leave vehicles on the lot as being repaired, or vice versa?
I think it says thirty days, then.
Well, that's what I've found so far, yes.
So it's a truck stop, he says it's a truck stop, a record shop, another is a record permit you found there, too?
Yes.
And there was three, there was three different businesses there that you said you found, so, for the record.
Twenty fifteen, there was a business permit open for ton and recovery on Foreside Avenue. December of twenty thirteen was a mechanic work for truck drivers slash rest area. Goods to be sold or services rendered, mechanic services. That was twenty thirteen.
Did it work with you on this, you didn't?
No.
You guys know?
This is all me, just on the code side.
So on the fence, though, you mentioned a decorative, what is the definition you said you found?
So the fence on, it's under chapter seven of our landscaping ordinance, number seven fifteen. Article four says, "The finisher, the decorative side of the fence shall face outward to be visible from the public right of way or the adjoining property." So that's about the thing that I found on that. So if you go by the town ordinance, that fence, I mean, should be facing the roadway, should be facing Tressel Road. That's the closest right of way is on through there, if you go by that ordinance.
So where's it facing?
It's facing.
His business.
The stated side is facing Tressel Road, the plank side's facing his business.
Sounds backwards.
It is backwards. And then abandoned vehicles, he gets, they have five of them on the property, right?
Yes.
How long had Winchester Fire Engines been there?
It's.
Since seventeen? Yeah, I've got pictures of it there in twenty seventeen. So there's quite a few more than five on that property. And it can't be a tow, a wrecker service, because that violates the ordinance. Can't be a junkyard, that violates the ordinance. So just, you know, for the record.
But when you're talking about the fence, are you talking about the finished product fence, or are you talking about the?
The plain road, that's what I know.
It says any, the ordinance says any fence.
Okay, even the?
Any.
Any, even the.
So this fence, if this is Tressel Road, it was taken off, that was the fence.
Your fence is like that, your tent is like that, Doran? Yeah, exactly. That has nothing, this is the fence, they're talking about that.
That's probably what we need to say.
The self fence is like, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, that's what I was just making sure.
Then just move it through. Well, according to that, how do you look at it?
Well, but when you say it's according what side you're looking at, what do you mean by that? I mean, you need to define that. I know, Doran, you've got scruples like this, right?
Mine is backward. The plank, this part here is on the outside. I'm looking at the good side.
That's what?
Now, I didn't go, mine's private, it's wrong.
No, that's what I'm saying, I don't know. I mean, he was just saying today that there's a lot of them like that, so he didn't know.
Yeah. I was just making sure more about that ceiling.
We're going to come get you, Doran. We're going to turn your fence around.
So.
Trick or treat.
I'm in violation, wouldn't you have? So, what did you say, David?
Those weren't on my property, right next to my property, it's the same way. The good side of it is facing their property, and then the other side is facing mine, but it's their fence.
So is that a definition, a decorative, or is that the way the fence is? I'm not, I don't know. You need to answer that one, you need to get a definition on that.
Like the other fence, both sides.
Because if there's like, rearboard like that.
Well, I mean, I got the fence, and I don't want to get the pretty side to the neighbor, I want to look at the pretty side.
But you're not commercial.
No.
But does it, that's what you need to address, it, the fence is backward, that's it. So you're saying there was the tow service there, or there isn't, is what I'm saying?
There is, there is.
Just, as you said, for the record. What do you say was done in thirteen? So just take up permits, quick permit? So there's three permits. Well, I haven't looked at all this, I know you said you were working on it. Have you met with, let me tell you about this? Well, you need to meet with him, and you need to take this information, you need to address it, like any instance, the complaint came in, so it's addressed tonight. You know what I'm saying?
It came in April.
You're saying there's three permits, a business system, okay. And you want to get a definition for those three, and let's allow them there. And if it's not supposed to be there, then you'll address it correctly.
But the, didn't the last administration pass a different ordinance defining junkyards? It sort of makes.
Your grandfather didn't like, you can ask the attorney anytime, but you can't go sit and proceed on somebody.
Anything around you.
It's not for anybody, it's just to what's right.
I get it.
No, it's not, sir.
Okay.
So you have not talked with Travis about any of these?
He says?
Yeah, I mean, you have to talk to Rodney about any of these.
No, I mean, these two things were definite, and I found them fault and violation, and I'd like to pursue it, I mean.
And he's trying to.
I'd like to pursue that and talk to Rodney and address the, the trees, I can understand. It would, you know, and I'm willing to move to give him until the fall of the year to replace his trees and shrubs, that's when he normally plants trees and shrubs. So I understand that. The fence, now that I've got definite proof of the fence being backwards and an article stating it's backwards, I want to hear his side of it. If the fence is backward, we'll put the fence there.
How many has to check that about the permits and what's permitted there, what's not, and what's grandfathered, what's not, not for anyone, but for everyone?
And something else that I was chasing all of this, the new article there that I was flipping, drew on C three for the zoning on chapter three. This is, this is new information that you guys have voted in, this is what your council's put in. So I went back to twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, chasing, I was up here two days digging for ordinances. I can't find anything from that time period of what the ordinance stated for his business at that time.
Sam indicated to me it wasn't relevant, because when he pulled the old fence down, he then.
But the only thing I'm saying, and I mean, I'm arguing on me, I'm trying my best to make this, you know, relevant to me to satisfy the business owner and our community. From what I can find in black and white, that footprint changed because he's installed a fence, he's installed shrubs. So something has to govern that installation of those two items. So if you go by that, with, even with the new provisions that you guys has adopted in, those are both in violation. That's my finding.
I think the fence is in the wrong location, too, because our new provision says we do two layers of shrubs and then the fence, and he's got it between the fence, between the two layers of shrubs and panels.
I don't know, I didn't, I just was looking at the fence. And I mean, and part of me does agree, it depends on what side of the fence you're standing on, and I say that with a smile on my face. Depends on what side you call, you know, in your personal yards of what you call the finished side or the unfinished side. But if you're going by a commercial side, that's what that is covering right there. Is it backwards or isn't it backwards?
I put one up, and I put it up backwards, so I had to take it down, because I wanted to be compliant with the shooting. I put the fence up backwards. I can put a dress side on the other side, but I didn't go through that expense, so I just went and took it down. Because according to plainly said, the dress side had to go away, it had to face the, your.
Your adjoining neighbor or your right of way?
It might wasn't up right, so I took it down.
That's right.
So what you need to do is take this and address it with the property owner if you have it on.
That's my next step.
Well, I don't care what you did with yours, I'm just saying this is a complaint that we need to deal with, take it to the property owner and address the issues.
Y'all want me to chase Doran, I will help him.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we need to take action in order for you to find him? If you do your, your research and find you, you're actually being violation, we don't need to take any action?
I just, I mean, from the codes officer, I just moved, let's, I'll report back to you next month. I'll go talk to Rodney this month and see if I can get all this resolved, you know, in person, whatever the outcome is, I'll bring it back to this council and report to you next month.
So you will need to, in order to take action?
It goes to city court, just like our own deal. That'll be killing.
But before we, before we, I mean, before we go and chase somebody to city court, I'm a firm believer in mediation.
I, I do, exactly.
I mean, I just want a good outcome for both sides, so let's tell Rodney and talk to Rodney, and maybe Rodney will be willing to comply and fix this, and force it out, Nathan.
But we'll, we'll be ready next month to talk.
That's right.
But you have not done that yet. You've been doing this.
Yes.
In your findings together, and you're not, nobody's not asked you to do this, now you're ready to go to the property owner.
That's right.
Where's the landscaping in relation to the fence?
The fence is in between, it's got like two trees, it's in between.
There's really no landscaping, because it's dead.
The tree's gone.
But he took down his old fence that he had, and I had understood, I had asked Earl about it, and I'd understood from Earl that he had a building permit, and so you can't call the guys for taking the fence down if he's going to build a bigger one. But then I learned later from Earl that Earl was mistaken, and he never actually had a building permit.
And those fences on the Foreside Avenue.
Well, Nate, did he have one that expired?
No, according to Earl, he's never got one. Rocky Top never got one.
Okay, well, I know, Earl didn't say, Earl's not me, I'm not saying.
And then the fence is supposed to go.
We're chasing this on. This is all I've got to go. I can't find the old pro digging.
I don't think there was any landscaping done. We've been in the place afterward.
I, I would go to the definition.
Okay, before you leave, uh, councils, since he's here, we had talked to Earl, and Earl is going to resign. Now they will want to regardless. Okay, after talking to Earl, and he's not here tonight, but he's, we can call him at any time. He's going to be here, he's gonna be available. But Earl made a recommendation that would take about a year to get a building inspector, to get all the classes and get him certified. So, we've talked to Coffee County's Building Inspector, and they're being asked for us to work with Travis if we decide to go this route. Let me just mention it to y'all, I can decide, and also to Marion County's Building Inspector, South Pittsburgh. Earl said that we could work with either or. He will be there from a distance after October thirty, thirty first, but he is retired. So, his recommendation is if we start getting Travis trained and work with these folks, they will be the ones that signs off because they are certified by the state, building inspectors for the town. Also, they don't have any vested interest and they don't know everybody or everything, you know, so it might be better until, it'll take about a year to get him trained. So, we go ahead and start setting him up in places and start getting him trained for this. And Travis said he was agreeable to do it, but he's gonna start scheduling those classes. And he can get a list of classes for the next meeting, and he can get the process, but it'll take about a year to get that done. And he will need to work with someone, we'll have to contract out. We'll get this.
I need a year to chase it. I've got too many hours of fire right now.
Yeah, and you said you wanted to though, because we talked about hiring somebody, but we.
We've got to do in town, and if we can do that, I'm all for it, but.
Because Earl went to a contract basis, so if we go this route, we can approve this next month. He can start taking classes, but then we can, we'll get to the three different building inspectors and decide upon one. So, we can have their ready so when Earl steps down.
Then we work on a contract basis, just like Earl?
Yeah, and they will also work with Travis.
So, would we be contracting with the individual like we did Earl or contracted?
No.
The municipal individual.
Yeah, because they carry their own licenses.
Who, who's paying for your schooling, Travis? Are you paying or what?
We pay, you got a contract.
So, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, we have a contract and, or we had, we'll have it again. We pay it over fifteen hundred dollars. It's pro rated. But if we get him certified, he would have to stay with us until that contract period will be over. But he's gotta get the process for the contract.
So, you're good with that?
Yep, I'm here with y'all. Whatever that is, that's our command, yeah.
But that's something to think about for the next meeting that we brought up. But after talking to Earl today, he made that recommendation whenever Travis and we're talking to him about it, it's all about. He will. He's Matt Terry, but that had done what we did. Earl has mentioned that today to us, so we called them to see who they are and see what they would do, and he would come up with that. And we also have to know what they'll contract for.
Yeah.
Let them get the rights.
So, on the Rodney deal, do what you gotta do, and if you have to go to city court, go to city court.
Just pursue it and let them know what's going on. I mean. And then we, you can ever, at the next meeting, you'll report what's going on.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay.
You mentioned to us that the ISO level has improved.
No, we don't know that yet. The ISO grading is about every five to seven years, so it's a, we're D right now. They're gonna be grading us in small.
But you, you thought that would be projected to include?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're bound to. If we better our equipment, our fleet, or, you know, everything's kind of changed, so. And it may not be a nominal number, but I, I think it'll be in that fluctuation range.
And you also said you've got three insurance recovered claims submitted. Have you gotten any money from insurance claims?
It may, I mean, we recovered.
Do you know how much you do? We can have a report.
Well, I'm sure.
Yep.
It's something you have to chase in a year, but.
There was some paperwork you had needed from Earl on ISO. Are you gonna be able to get that?
Uh, I think we're gonna look at it internally. Kevin Gillman, Kevin, Kevin Gillman and I is going to look at it, see if we can figure something out with it.
So, Earl's, Earl's turned it over to you then?
It's, yeah.
Basically.
It's in my mailbox, yeah.
Can you do that?
No.
You give it a try.
Does anyone else have anything to try?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to look, parts and right that we, we on it on, we're going to do that, John is going to do that quickly here. You wanna wait, uh, she wants to wait. We're gonna turn it over to you and Travis for your presentation. If you're ready, we'll look at it. Do you care to, all the items that you are actually addressing tonight, to mention those as you go?
Okay.
Can everyone say that okay? Oh, but Dean, Dean's going to. Dean, you'll give it closer. We got some cheers.
Okay, um, as everyone knows, we finished the water and sewer capacity study that we were tasked to do, uh, a month or so ago. And I provided two copies of the reports prior to the start of the meeting, but I'll go through just some summary items and get to the results. Uh, just as a background, what we concluded today, some of the parting steps that need to be accomplished, and, and as well, accomplished a lot of other side notes as well on the way. But, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, starting in February through July of that year, we formed a system-wide flow monitoring project that prioritized, uh, the sewer system. Uh, identified areas of ionized, which was an important step in determining what needed to be done next. In October of twenty twenty-one, or excuse me, back up through, in May of twenty, October twenty twenty-one through May of twenty twenty-two. We performed, uh, asset management tasks, which included manhole inspections, GPSing of the manholes, uh, smoke testing in the sewer system. Um, GPS of all the water assets, the valves, hydrants, meters. Uh, hydrant testing was performed, uh, directly with the town through a contractor that results were incorporated into the, the GIS. Uh, all the storm water features within city limits were mapped. Um, the GIS dashboard with all the mapping features, uh, was created for access for the channel staff to utilize that housed all the data that's collected. Uh, beginning in, uh, May of, uh, this year through August, we worked on the capacity study to identify a capacity within both the water and sewer system. Uh, the sewer system, we created a model, um, throughout the entire system to focus in on the main pump station, uh, which carries flow to the wastewater treatment plant. And also looked at the capacity of the force main. Uh, of the treatment facility itself. Uh, we looked at the south central pump station and the force main that carries flow there as well, how those interacted with each other. Uh, we also looked at the capacity within the gravity sections of the, of the system, which is about forty thousand feet of gravity sewer. Uh, we also looked at the water system, looked at water usage data, uh, that we obtained from the town, uh, to determine what type of usage, uh, within each, uh, zone of the system. Uh, looked at the storage, uh, that's included in the, in the water system, incorporated the hydrant testing to calibrate pressure and flow throughout the water system. So, so models were built both in the water and sewer. We, we ran several, uh, scenarios based on some conversations that have been, um, had over the last several months about potential developments throughout the systems. And the results are, uh, on the water side, the current capacity is basically, uh, relegated to the, the water treatment facility at point nine four MGD. Which is the maximum output the plant can produce. Um, the current usage of the, uh, water system is at point two eight. So, that's based off of usage records, uh, which, um, leaves a about seventy percent remaining capacity. Um, there's approximately point five.
You wanna hear it?
Okay. There's approximately point five MGD for stories throughout the system in two plants. So, that's seventy percent remaining, uh, is dependent upon the location and the density of development. So, basically what that means is there's areas south and west of the water system that when you get to the further reaches, the furthest away from the plant, furthest away from the tanks. Then the development and that entire seventy percent is not, um, applied to one specific area. It's, it's spread out throughout the system, and so there may be some areas that can, that will need upgrades if the density and location calls for that depending on the, the line sizes. So, but as a whole in general, uh, you're looking at about a seventy percent capacity remaining in the water system, and that's with some modifications of, uh, the treatment plant running at a maximum capacity. Uh, that means I would have to increase time, uh, to run the plant. On the sewer side, um, capacity is currently at half a million gallons. Uh, current usage is about point two five, um, MGD. So, we're at about forty-nine percent remaining capacity during dry weather. So, that, uh, underline and, and note that, that it's a different story during wet weather. I'll talk about it in a minute. As far as dry weather goes, there's about forty-nine percent capacity remaining. The main pump station, uh, has a current usage rate. We're looking at about a hundred and eighty thousand gallons a day. It can pump close to a million gallons, so there's, uh, capacity there. South central pumping, uh, station pumps about sixty-eight thousand gallons a day. It's capable of about four hundred thousand. So, there's, there's room to, to grow in dry weather. Um, the catch on the sewer is wet weather, and so we go back into the flow monitoring that we, uh, performed last year and look at the models and what, uh, the usage rates show. So, the map that I have on the screen is broken up by basins based on the flow monitoring study. And so, uh, during a one-inch storm, um, in a twenty-four hour period, the sewer system is capable of handling, uh, that flow. Just barely, it's, you're about, uh, just under half a million gallons a day, which is what the treatment capacity is. Then a two-inch storm, you are over capacity by about, uh, just under two hundred thousand. A three-inch storm, you're over capacity at about four hundred thousand. So, what that means is you have excessive ionized, which we have known about, um, we've been talking about. So, that wasn't a surprise, uh, that just confirmed what we had been talking about for the last, uh, several months since the results of the flow study. So, where is the ionized at and what are we going to do to, to mitigate that? So, first, during the, uh, the asset management portion of the project where we went out and inspected the manholes, we looked at all the pipe types as part of the inspection to get an inventory of each pipe and each manhole. So, uh, based on what we saw in the inspections, there were twenty main lines that had the material of HDP pipe, which is slipline pipe. Um, so historically, I know there's been some rehab, uh, done here in the past. Uh, according to what we saw in the field, there are about twenty main lines with HDP pipe, or they've been slipline, which is about three thousand two hundred twenty-nine feet. Uh, sixteen of those lines are in the worst basin, so you can see from the map, everything north of Main Street, um, is in basin one. I'll back up a slide. Uh, so basin one, the largest basin, and basin fifty-nine are two of the worst, uh, basins that, that we, the model and the flow monitoring indicate. Fifty-nine is where the flow comes from Tracy City, from the pump station. Uh, and the, uh, the, everything that's east of where that comes in, which would include, uh, the housing development out there is also tied to a separate force main that comes in as well. So, so those two, uh, locations come into fifty-nine. Basin one is everything else on the gravity side, north of, uh, Dixie Lee. Uh, those two make up predominantly, uh, the largest contributors of ionized.
So, what are these two areas that you identified those to be metered with wet weather? Is one Tracy City and one is the second, you simply?
That's right. That would be the area that encompasses north of Dixie Lee and the assembly area. Uh, we had the one meter just upstream of the old, uh, treatment plant, which is just downstream from the assembly or the, everything north of town.
So, to be able to tell what monitoring everybody's set meters in there in wet weather, so we know what's actually coming from them, which fills a large portion.
That's correct, and we'll, I, I'll get into some of that information here in a second, but, uh, so we looked at the importance of, you know, what was done in the past, uh, based on the, the material that we, that we visually observed in the field during the inspections. And so, uh, it equates to about eight percent of the main lines in the system had been previously rehabbed, uh, with slipline. So, uh, there's, there's some work to be done. That makes sense. Uh, most of your work was done upstream, uh, within basin one, so a lot of the area of the, the system that Mont Eagle, uh, the town owns in basin one ha- has been identified as, as defective and have been repaired. Sixteen of those main lines. Um, and four of those have been repaired just south of, uh, Main Street. So, recommendations, the biggest thing is we need to mitigate ionized. Uh, as far as the sewer goes, the treatment plant, uh, is rated at half a million gallons a day. We're experiencing, uh, twice that during large storm event. So, mitigating that ionized is critical. Um, part of that is to proceed with the system-wide CCTV investigations, which we talked about previously, uh, that need to be conducted during wet weather. So, basically, we're waiting for wet weather so that those investigations, uh, can be conducted at a time when we see the water coming in and can identify what pipes need to be repaired. If we try to come in and do investigations now when it's dry, uh, then we risk not repairing or not seeing the, the pipes that are really the problem. So, we want to identify just the problematic pipes, um, and make those repairs. So, uh, the next thing to do would be to conduct that system-wide, uh, investigation that can be done within thirty or sixty days, um, once wet weather, once the groundwater is really charged. And there's wet weather there that, uh, where the pressure builds up in the groundwater. Uh, also, we need to perform some additional, more focused flow monitoring, uh, which would encompass flow monitoring, uh, of the Tracy City pump station and force main to identify what quantity is actually coming from, uh, Tracy City versus any coming from Mont Eagle, um, on the force main. We performed a drawdown test at the Tracy City pump station, and it was verified that they could, those pumps are rated and can pump, uh, the, the entire volume that we see. So, it's very possible from an equipment standpoint that they could convey that, the entire amount of flow, uh, to the town of Mont Eagle. But it's unclear because there are two sources, uh, that we need to identify that were upstream of our gravity meter. So, to really be sure of where that flow is coming from, we would need to put a meter at the pump station, Tracy City pump station, put the gravity meter back in, and then meter the station at the housing development that's out, uh, on the way to the pump station. uh, on the way to the pump station. And so we would be able to, to isolate, uh, those three areas. That would need to be, also be done during wet weather for a short time period so that we got some wet weather, uh, storm data in and could identify, um, which were the, the, uh, the problem, problem areas. Uh, and then to proceed with the planned INI correction project, once those inspections are completed. So the town already has an ARC grant that's approved, uh, for half a million dollars that would need to be coupled with A R P money in order to not have to match that A R C fund. Otherwise, if you don't couple A R P with it, then you have to match five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. Um, your A R P counts as a match for the ARC grant that you've already qualified for, you've already been approved for. That's a bird in the hand. And so with the ARC and A R P funds, then that should be able to address the priority items, um, that we find. And so, you know, in best case scenario, it takes less than that. Depending on what we see with the C C T V investigations, we already know, uh, defects that need to be repaired, uh, based on what we saw during the smoke testing, the manhole inspections. But the main lines are, are very expensive to repair. And so that's going to really dictate the, the overall cost of the project. Um, so that's why we really need to be sure about the priorities and, and investigate during wet weather so that we only repair the worst of the worst. Um, and then also proceed with the plan design of wastewater treatment plant upgrade to increase treatment capacity. Your current remaining capacity of the water system is just under a million. Your sewer system is a half million. So, you know, if you're trying to, uh, develop and to, um, keep your capacities similar, then that, uh, you need to consider to, to proceed with that so that your wastewater treatment plant can support the, the growth. And then also, uh, the flow that's coming in, uh, right now you're matched one to one with your water usage and your sewer usage on dry weather days, which is very good. A lot of municipalities don't see the one to one. They're still, um, you know, they, they still have some low groundwater infiltration that's present. Um, that's not really evident here. So I think, uh, you could really get the bang for the buck with the INI project to knock out the wet weather INI. On the water side, uh, water storage is a critical need. Uh, there's a lot of repairs that need to be performed at both existing storage tanks. Um, you know, that, that's just a given. We've talked about that, uh, for the last several months, that, uh, we need to try to figure out the funding that we can use for that. S R F does not allow what they consider maintenance items, uh, to be used for those. And so we'll have to utilize a different funding mechanism other than S R F unless they have changed their stance on, um, what can be used on the storage tank to repair those.
Travis, are you aware of outside funding sources for routine maintenance like that? I know we've been talking about this for the two years that I'm here.
They, they have changed the rules up here lately with all the funding coming out. And so I would have to go in and check and see on what, if there are any new rules for U S D A or any other, uh, grants that could be used for that.
But really, we, we just should be budgeting for this.
Yes. Just putting your appreciation with real dollars, not just up the bill. No.
I know there, there's a few repairs at the headworks of the water treatment plant that need to be made that are, in the grand scheme of things, are not a lot of money, but there's still a lot of money that, uh, need to be repaired, uh, before it gets in such a state that it, it's going to cost more and, and, and result in downtime.
So follow, follow the question. I know I've asked you this before. At what point do we just have to give up on finding grants to do maintenance and do we just do maintenance? I'm concerned particularly about the condition of the water tank over near the fire station.
I think you're there now.
Okay, so we, we, we really need to be thinking about some of those depreciation funds and spending them. So we need to get with our accountant and figure out what reserves we need to maintain and what reserves we can spend on maintenance.
That's correct. Just, just because the actual, if you had a blank check ready to go right now, you know, the real world of construction times and, and, uh, parts and equipment and things are, are hard to come by. And so it's going to be some time to get, even if you had everything in place right now. So, so certainly, you know, the longer you wait and the more that, that A R P money comes out, there's going to be fewer contractors, prices are going to go up and it's going to take longer to do the repair. And so I think those repairs have already been, you know, staged for a, a little bit. So I think, you know, now's the time to try to make the decision.
So the last estimate was one point two million to upgrade both tanks. Do we need to upgrade, do we need to update those?
And we, we put in, so we actually had a grant put in through S R F last year to make those repairs. And so we, we thought we were on, on, on track. And then S R F said, we're not going to let you do that. They actually called us during the ranking project and said, um, we, you know, we've made a new drilling and you, you're not going to be able to do that with that money. Um, and so we, we kept the grant application, turned it in for an installation of a new tank because we knew that there was a possibility of the need for a new tank, south and west of the system, which the model confirmed, uh, just in discussion with John and, and how the, the system hydraulics have worked, that that was, that was the guess. Model confirmed that. And so you, you now have a application in S R F's hands that the ranking should come out any time for a new tank to be installed, should it be needed, which it may be. But you also need to repair these tanks. So, so really you lost that money. That application had to be amended or revised. And so now we're back to trying to figure out how to fix that.
Nate, um, T D X had called John and we spoke with Angela today. She's scheduling a meeting to come up because apparently, what did you say, John? Several years back, they issued repair needs.
Right.
And so she called me today, so she's going to schedule a meeting. She's bringing her team up to meet with us in September. I'll let you know when the date is, uh, because they're actually going to go everything they did several years ago and tell us what we can do, where we can go and how we get those repaired. It's just discussed the repairing of the tanks. Because as she mentioned today, we went here whenever that was presented. So she's going to present it to her with our team in September. So we actually got that phone call today.
So that's for potential funding?
No, that's, that's for repairing through these tanks and how we can fund them. And what's her recommendation and how long we have to fund them because this was done several years ago. And, because I know what she said today, John, and it wasn't. So she's going to meet with, uh, she's coming up, she said, with John and myself. And if you want to be here, you can be here. Anybody can be here. You know what I'm saying? The T D X is coming up in September. We'll give you the date and time for it. So, but Angela called today. She spoke with John and then she called me. So, did that just happen this morning?
So we used to listen to T D X.
She's, now she and, uh, several people are coming up, you know, the entire team's coming up.
That's all I have.
So based upon the capacity test, we do have capacity for growth in water. And we did also mention, you looked at the drought and you looked at that scenario. John, do you have the, um, the numbers and where we're at with that? But the one other that was mentioned of not having enough water capacity and being in a drought.
Well, right now the lake level is level three. Field wet level eight. July, we had a call of six point nine, six inches of rain on the thirtieth. That's when we had the three point four two.
And that was, how long did we have that, one weekend, you say?
That was on the thirtieth.
Oh, just one day?
When we had that big rain.
Like a flash. When the.
And everybody talks about contaminating the water. I like for them to know that we have a water treatment plant. It treats the water. The contamination is silt. Every lake gets silt and it settles in. Really the only thing that the silt does, it raises the turbidity in the water. And that don't last for a day or two and it goes back down. But I don't know where they're getting what's called contamination.
Travis, you mentioned that tonight. Will you toss the figures that go into the water, what the percentage is based upon one piece of property, the one in reference?
So the, the drainage basin of Laurel Lake is about twelve hundred acres. Um, and so one piece of property, so like fifteen acre piece of property would be one percent of the drainage basin of Laurel Lake. So there's, there's quite a few acres that, that feed into the lake or drain to the lake here in my.
So, and if you said, the one piece of property that was referred to, that it was the lake that's coming from, I mean, it's, it's been posted, the questions were asked with the R B T property. You said it travels one mile. So the ratio would be what?
It's about, uh, one and a quarter miles. So it, it has to go over land flow for about, well, over a mile.
So there's ninety-one other percent that's going into the lake that needs to be addressed.
That property accounts for about one percent of the drainage basin or the drainage area inside the Laurel Lake basin.
And ninety-nine percent of the silt that's currently going in there, which reduces the capacity of the lake because the silt builds up, correct?
That's not correct.
If that's not, the raise of silt go to the bottom, right?
Nope.
This is also a lawsuit that, yeah, we're aware of. These just have to be addressed. Well, I mean, I'm just saying, uh, he has his information for you, but you are suing us, Will, again, in a field score correct?
Yeah, yes.
So there's certain things, but he can address what he can. But where does silt go from, from those things? I mean, it doesn't, it has to go through a process, correct?
Uh, on overland flow, a lot of silt drops out. And silt, like John said, it drops out at the bottom of the lake. And again, it's twelve hundred acres. So, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things get washed into the lake during the rain over twelve hundred acres.
So Travis, you've recommended that we look at, uh, the stormwater ordinance within the Laurel, the lake watershed. And I know that you and Sam are working on that. What types of things would be in that that might help mitigate some, some of these, um, citizens' concerns?
Well, in a lot of cities and municipalities, rural cities that are not under the M S four, uh, requirement, which Mont Eagle is one of those, that is prudent to, to have a flooding, some flooding ordinances that control flooding on, at all properties, um, that would pertain to the roads and ditches and everyone's private property. And so, uh, I think that's something that M T A S is looking at the town currently, just to have some general flooding guidelines or ordinances that can be, uh, enacted in the town. It makes sense just to provide overall protection of flooding, uh, throughout the, the whole drainage basin and the town.
And it will apply to everyone, residential and commercial? So, and that is being done right now because Sam sent us a letter. M T A S is working on that for us now. So it'll be about two weeks before then we'll be back with that.
And in addition to floodwater, we were talking about, we were on the phone the other day, doing some actual work with contaminants and parking lot runoff with, just within the watershed for commercial establishments. Is that?
That would be included in the flooding ordinance because if your property doesn't flood, then any potential contaminants will not leave your site.
So it's about overland flow that leaks the site?
That's correct.
So it's a sanitary commercial?
It's a big commercial. I could have a whole list of it, what the cemetery does.
So, so the thing about the cemetery is it's, it's grass. So the, a lot of the rainwater infiltrates. So it becomes an issue where you have asphalt and a lot of impervious surface and the water can't soak in, so it runs off.
So any asphalt, pavement, driveways would be the same thing? Driveways, um, any disturbed land, whatever's developed? Any of those things would be added into that formula? Okay. And they were all equal one instead of individual parts, correct?
That's correct.
So we do have the capacity of water. We're in good shape. We're not in a drought season. We're running over, is that correct? And the water is treated?
No, it runs over level eight. We're at level three.
So at level three?
We're below that now.
Okay. So, and so we've just got to identify the INI issues so that they can fix their INI. Will you, will you define INI so people understand what that's coming in and what's happening there?
That is, uh, rainwater, stormwater that finds its way into the sanitary sewer. And so you transport and treat, uh, stormwater in the sanitary system, which is costly and, and, uh, creates, uh, structural issues in your sanitary system. And so making sure that those repairs are taken care of and maintained. Uh, the infrastructure such as manholes and main lines, service laterals, that's both on the private side and on the public side. Uh, that's root intrusions and any type of structural defects that may have happened during installation uh, would cause deterioration of, of a pipe or a manhole. And so that would allow stormwater to get into the system. And so now, um, you're treating stormwater basically. And so, you know, if you had a five gallon bucket and the bucket ran over, you, you've got another bucket there, you might have two full five gallon buckets. So you don't want to just continue to build a bigger plant and a bigger pump station to move that flow because you may just keep building and building. You don't know how much can, can get in. Once your system is full, it's only going to take, a five gallon bucket's only going to hold five gallons of water. And so you need to stop the water from coming in altogether before you begin to upgrade your system. And so finding, mitigating that influent filtration or extraneous flow is, is the next best step economically and, uh, you know, as part of the long-term care of your system.
The M T A S consultant who was looking at our finances said that with the assembly in particular, he thought we could put a flow meter just on the, the water going into the main line from the assembly and then compare it to their master meter and maybe get some results a little faster.
It wasn't, it wasn't M T A S, it was T A U D.
T A U D.
Well.
Is that, is, does that make, it seems a little coarse. Is that something that people normally do?
Uh, if you can, you can build for that. In that case, uh, on the map, there's multiple lines that come in from the assembly. So it would take, you could still do that, but it would take multiple meters. And, um, you would have to have the right kind of meter for the right kind of flow. Um, for instance, if flows are very low, if it's a seasonal, like a campground or some place that's seasonal that has very low flows during part of the time and very high flows, you would have to have a meter that would accommodate for that low flow situation so the sensors could, could maintain and, and react to the flow. So, um, that's not an easy situation in that case to meter that specific flow. But you could put one upstream and one downstream and then subtract.
Got you. Okay. That's easier.
Yeah, that's great.
John, you want to comment on that?
No.
Okay. Cause then, then you got across something. So does anyone have anything else for Travis right now? Before you, before you step down, there are two resolutions in which is for the, um, non-compacted fund, the seven hundred and twenty-two thousand that, that we're to receive. We have resolution one, which is Town of Mont Eagle Rescue. This is a rescue plan money. Now, this is not what we're planning on getting ready for whenever then. The rest is the thirty-three point three billion that we're preparing for is going to be released. But this is the seven hundred and twenty-two thousand that Stacy, that then you've been working with, with the town. We need two resolution here. One is zero four two two, Town of Mont Eagle, American Rescue Money Act, A R P A, Non Compacted Funds for Water Infrastructure Grant Program for Technical Assistance and Grant Administration. And this would be done through Southeastern Development. And we have to approve a resolution for them to, um, administer the funds because it's federal funds. When we did this, um, I don't know if you're out here, whenever we did it, it was stimulus money and we got the four point five billion because federal funds have to be administered in a certain way. And we haven't been one in staff. What is the percentage? Two percent of the entire process and which, six percent in which they administer the funds? You can see, I'm at three percent, isn't it? Three. I've got the button. Three percent, which would be the total of the twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars for them to administer the funds. But we can hire a person to do this, not cheap. So that's what this resolution would be for, that we need to pass tonight. If we want them to administer this seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar.
Travis, is this something that your company would otherwise do?
Well, he's got one here too, for them, Angela.
Uh, typically, we, we work with development districts or other top T A U D development districts that, that assist towns in planning and administration of grants. So typically. districts that, that assist towns in planning and administration of grants, so typically we work with those folks that do that, so.
I make a motion, we approve resolution...
Zero four two two.
Rule two, it's not legal, no?
Zero four two two.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any other discussion? Ralph Alba, Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Now, we have, we have the second resolution, which would be zero five two two, Town of Montego, American Rescue Plan Act, would be non-compete for water infrastructure for engineering services with, Travis, I know you're got L, the L J A Engineering Firm, which Travis is already, or environmental, well, last to clarify, you're an environmental engineer.
Civil engineer.
We have a civil engineer, we have, you have multiple engineers on staff that can administer this, and of course, it doesn't say what the sum is, but it's based upon...
It's just whatever task or the contract that we would bring to the board, depending on wherever the project type of thing.
But as you see, we cannot administer this ourselves, we would have to have an engineering service to do that, so, um, and it has to go through a resolution process for us to make forward to receive this funding.
I move, we approve resolution zero five dash twenty-two, our L J A Engineering Form, Engineering Services.
I see. Any discussion? Ralph Alba? Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that's, um, one million two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in grants would, that we would receive with this American Recovery Plan money, plus we're applying for additional money, we're, of course, preparing what we have for the state revolving loan fund, also the C C V G.
C C V G and S R F.
And S R F, which, once the American, I'm gonna look at the name of it, since it's not stimulus, American Rescue Plan Act could be received, we can get anywhere from forty to ninety percent forgiven, last time we got fifty, fifty-five percent, got one point seven percent interest rate, so that's what we've been working on to complete, and we're now completing now in those processes. So. Yeah, that's what we just did, okay, well, so do we need another one? No, oh, we've got one other, pardon me, she gave me another one, and this is, again, the process with the American Recovery Money, which would be agreement for administrative services, we have to agree that as well, but it's not a resolution. Folks, when we deal with federal money, there's a lot of paperwork still.
So why do we have to approve this, it's a new resolution?
Because it's an agreement.
Oh, this is the actual contract?
Yes, yes, agreement with, with. We just approved them as administrators, uh, they have administered this before, as he said, they did the administrations on the house, they did the engineers on the house.
I make a motion, we approve the administration services agreement with a payment schedule that's set for in resolution zero four dash twenty-two.
Okay, nice statement, is that?
All right, any other discussion? I'm in favor, um, this is not all of them, so all those are down there, Travis, so I can proceed with that process. John, do you have?
I don't have nothing else, y'all got anything?
Do you have anything for John?
Whatever happened to the boom mower, did it, did y'all figure one wrong?
It's coming, it's not here.
Oh, we hadn't showed up yet.
Thank you.
He's coming.
Yeah, it's supposed to be here tomorrow, maybe.
But before, before we leave utilities, we did meet with T A U D, which is another thing that's been looking at the assessment of our rates, one of the things they did discover, they have not been, and of course, this is something I asked us to weigh in, they have not been increased in twelve years, and they have several different options, as Nate was here, will you hear, I know that we met last week, and Jessica, you were here for a while, and of course, John was, but one of the things they also discovered that with our, the increase in price with taps and meters, there's an individual formula you can do with cost, and that we were losing money, uh, with those, so those will be changed immediately to recover the cost, so that we're no longer, we were charging less than what it's costing us for meters, so those have to be addressed with the rate increase for things.
Do we need to?
No, I mean.
For those rate increases?
We don't, we don't know what they are, because they have to figure them out, because they got free, because they buy the product, remember, they have a formula sheet that they're using?
But he, he told us where he thought they should be.
Oh, not the rate increases, we're not addressing those now.
No, 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 the, the meter, the tap fees, he, he basically said we didn't have a rate at all for a two inch meter, and we needed to have one.
No, he said, no, we have to do them individually, that formula sheet that he provided for us, Nate, that's what, is that not correct, John?
Yeah, he also said that, you know, no residential.
Should receive it to his meter anymore, he said residential should not receive it to his meter, but Deb has the form, I can't, no, and she's got the board, Nate, and he said that those would have to be figured out, because he doesn't know if you're bored down to rock, what you're doing, and as you order the products, they'll put our pace.
I, I remember that, and I saw the form, but he also said we should, we could immediately address the commercial tap issue, because we currently don't have a rate set for two inch commercial taps, and he said we should, and it should be between seven to ten thousand dollars per tap, and we have lots of businesses coming in, and so I'm just a little concerned, I don't, if we lost money on the last two inch tap, I just want to make sure we don't lose money on the next one.
Deb says that he said we have to figure them out individually, yes, the tap costs went up, but then also you have to figure in the labor and the boring, and those items in that sheet, but yes, you're right.
Or is that sheet, like where we've been charged five hundred dollars for a mower?
Yeah.
Or is the sheet supposed to charge so much foot if we hit rock?
That's right.
Then we bore, then we hit rock, then we have to charge so much foot.
And you're correct, the top, the entire price will go up, we can't set an amount according to what Deb just said.
But he said we could do it immediately by just going back and looking what we paid for the last several taps, I just don't want to lose the opportunity.
Well, they're doing it now, they just did, Deb was off last week, as a reason she doesn't have it, and John and her were gonna work on it this week.
With, with historic costs or, or going forward?
Going forward, they're gonna have to.
That's what I'm saying, I think we can go ahead.
But how do you know if it's gonna cost, do you just want to throw a number out there or just do, I mean, I just don't understand, they can't, they haven't figured it out yet.
What he told us to do was go back and look.
But they haven't been here, so they haven't been here to look at it.
He talking about going back and looking what we've been charged?
Yes, well, we know that we're not charging enough.
Sure, but look at what our actual costs are on historic orders.
Again, that's what she's doing.
Now, we'll have to find out what a two inch meter costs, because everything going on, raised patents and all this for two inch meters, that, what we're gonna have to do.
And Debbie's not been here, and so they haven't had the chance to do that, but they're going to do that this, this week, right, because she was off on vacation last week.
Okay, I just want to make sure, we're gonna go ahead and say, because I thought I had understood from you that we, we were just gonna be charging on a per tap basis rather than having an actual tab.
No, no, they're gonna have it, they need for the tap, and then they're gonna have the cost for it set, when he said to look at all that, but they would come up with a tap fee, right, John, John, how are you gonna do it, so you can explain it to him?
What he told, what he told me to do was to take that sheet and do it individually, and then we could do like a two inch tap, and come out and, and come up with the cost.
So does that mean that each individual tap is gonna cost a different rate?
Different rate, yes.
Yep, or them, but yeah.
With the tabs.
That doesn't, that doesn't sound like very transparent government.
Well, no, I don't think, the tap will cost X amount, like you said, right, and then the cost?
I, I just want to make sure that all our, our, we have a set cost and all our development are being charged the same thing, because if we're, if we're charging each individual tap a different rate, that's, that's hard for the citizens to know that people are being treated fairly.
Okay, what was the chart he give us, it's got, I don't have my chart with me, but it's got down there, man hours, backhoe hours, that, fitting.
Sporing.
Yeah, mower, okay, if you go for what they've set down, instead of having a set price, everyone is gonna be different, Coach.
Well, what he, what he asked us to do was go back and look at the last half dozen or dozen taps we've put in, based on that sheet, and come up with a single uniform rate to charge everybody, because it's just not gonna look good as, as a, as a town, it's not gonna look good if one developer pays thirty-five hundred dollars for their two inch tap, and another developer pays seven thousand for their tap, that's just...
Based on the cost.
He was saying, if you break four bits, you have to pay for those four bits.
And so we need to, we need to average those costs out, and charge a single fee, I was listening to him.
He did not, well, everybody else heard, he said, to come up with a sheet, he called, charge so much for materials, which it costs you, and that will be a thirty day, is it thirty days you order monkey, every thirty or sixty days?
Yeah, but it might be, it might be six months before it gets here.
But what I'm saying is to close, um, just like everybody else, this process has to change in thirty days because of materials, they will, of course, say this is for ten hours, man hours, if it goes over ten hours, you will be charged this, if you have to board the road, it'll be charged, if you don't board the road, you're not gonna be charged, that's what he told them to do.
That's, that's, that's not my understanding.
So in other words, you're gonna pay two thousand dollars.
Regardless.
You're gonna pay two thousand dollars for a tap, but insulation fees will be in addition.
Yeah, and, but wouldn't.
Isolation fees will be.
And the tap's not gonna be two thousand, no, X amount, but you're right, the other incidentals could change, and that's what he told both of them to do.
So does that make sense, if you charge a certain price for a tap, and then insulation is on top of that?
It's a way to do it, it's just hard to be real transparent.
Well, how, I mean, ones, they get the formula, that would be like Jessica having one done, it was simple, and yours were going over the road, and it was ten more hours and we broke three bits on yours, you're gonna stand your sheet, you were charged the additional cost for those items, why would Jessica have to pay for those items, and she didn't, and it wasn't cost, I think that's real transparent when they say what the costs are for, we're not, we're not just gonna give them, they total them out.
It's just gonna require the citizens to be there watching to see how many bits get more, that, that's, I'm, I'm trying to...
I hope they trust the employees, honestly.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to say anything about the employees.
I think if it was explained right, I'm okay.
Me too, we're not changing it today, we're just saying, T A U D said we're losing money, and we must increase those products, that's the only thing, when I made it here, I didn't say what the price was gonna be, cause.
Yeah, you know.
Letting the people know, if there's an increase, because we're losing money.
If I, I have a question for Travis.
Well, he's gonna get up, whatever, we're finished, he'll let us finish with the rest of anything, no, well, he's, he knows he's staying, and then we'll do the three minute thing, and then we'll go from there, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, but if you're gonna restrict your free speech, three minutes.
So you want to talk anymore about that, so we'll go down there.
Hey, we're not gonna take the action.
No, not to not, uh, Keith?
Yeah, uh, like I said, the boom mowers should be here tomorrow, one day this week, and, uh, our lawnmower that we ordered, what, three months ago?
Yeah.
It finally showed up, John hasn't, it had a snow plow now, so, I wonder if we're gonna need it, and the paving on, uh, is supposed to start in two weeks, maybe we'll get that, that started, so we've done most of these where, where they're gonna pave, so we're good there.
What happened on the internet of Laurel Lake today?
That's what happens when you clean out ditches.
They get the fiber optics and they have to go back and cover it.
Yeah, they hit rock, and they just went across top of the rock, it's probably six inches deep, yeah, and our hole was eight, so.
Right, girl.
Way bad.
Do you all have anything else for Keith?
No.
All right, Planning Commission, Janet, is Janet here, she's gonna be, Planning Commission.
Okay, today, the, um, there was a joint meeting between the Reg-, Montego Regional Planning Commissioners and, um, the people on the commission that attended were either Michelle, Russell, Richard Black, Janet Miller Schmidt, Peter Beasley, our provost, provost, and Doreen Palmerly, and then the Mount Eagle Town Council Alderman were there, Doreen, Jessica Favelora, Nate Wilson, Alvin Powell, and Mayor Rodman. We met today with Anya Shalan, um, from the Southeast Tennessee Planning District, to discuss the future and ordinance regulating ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units. The group went over the draft, um, set of ordinances, line by line, to understand and determine the criteria of an ADU in the Mount, in Mount Eagle Town limits, um, there's gonna be a perm, uh, uh, that was a draft, and the document will be completed and presented to the Planning Commission on September fifteenth, and then the Planning Commission will probably, pass it on to the council for approval, and if it's approved by the council, there will be an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU application online, uh, for the town, on the town website for information, you can go to the website, that's what the Planning Commission has done in the last couple of months.
You did say then, just for the record, when is the next Planning Commission meeting? It was rescheduled, the workshop and the Planning Commission is September the fifteenth, is that correct?
That's correct, September fifteenth at, uh, the normal times, at five, at five o'clock we'll have a, a workshop, and then at six o'clock we'll have the meeting.
Do you all have any questions for? Okay, thank you, and thank you for lunch today, Janet, it allowed you to put lunch where everybody's at, thank you. Okay, um, Parks and Rec, I'll give it to you, you later.
Okay, so, um, the first thing coming up on our agenda will be our Trump or Treat event, which is October the twenty-fifth, it's a Thursday from five to eight, we're partnering, partnering again with Montego Elementary School, it'll be at the school, and last year, uh, it rained terribly, so we were all inside, it was very crowded, it was very hot, but, um, the school this year will open their full gym for us, so we can have tables and, um, all the vendors or, or people that are bringing candy for the children can be in a big circle in the gym, it'll be a lot better, and you also will have an option to be outside if you want to do the Trump or Treat, or you can come inside where it's air-conditioned and lighted and, and do something inside, so, uh, that, that's coming up, and the kids are gonna have a hot dog dinner, if they'd like to stay after school and wait for the festivities to start, it'll be six dollars for all the children to have a hot dog supper, um, we're asking if you would like to have a, a table or a spot with your car in the Trump or Treat, that you sign up or register on the school's website, so we have an idea of how many, how many folks are coming, and I'll also have, um, that link to their, their forms put on our town website too, so either, either way you can do that. Um, we're working right now with Cunningham Recreation to get some more equipment for the Hannah Pickett Park Playground area, we have a seven thousand dollar grant from the Southeastern, South Cumberland Community Fund, and we have three thousand dollars from community donors and Morton Methodist Church to buy a ten thousand dollars worth of additional equipment, and, uh, the, um, the recreation department are, they're putting together some, some choices for us based on the amount of money that we have to spend, and maybe we also have another thousand dollars from the signature people that we can, we can add to this too, um, the walking course around the park has been refurbished with a community donation, and I've noticed just being, where I'm over here, that there are a lot of people that use that, that new, um, that new pathway, and I did know how long it was, uh, it's about a third of a mile, isn't that what we figured out?
Yeah, I can't remember the footage, it's me and he made it.
It's around the third or a half mile to go around the whole track. On November the fourth, we're going to have shop local here at the town hall, and this is for any people that want to, uh, have things that they've made at home, it could be jelly jams, craft items, and for no charge, they can be in this room, and people can come and, and look at their wares, it's on November the fourth, our Christmas, our Christmas parade date's been set, it's gonna be December third, and the theme is Christmas Wonderland, that will be around six o'clock in the evening, and we'll have all the sign of the setups probably over at the B F W Hall, starting around five o'clock in the afternoon, and then the last thing I want to talk about is that we are considering a work day over at the Harton Park to help clean up the flower beds, and this will be in honor of our First Lady Maria Lee, who's been treated now for lymphoma, and we're hoping to get volunteers who'll come, and in the spirit of her, her life of service, we'll say that we're doing something in honor of, of her, so we'll have more information about that as we get it sort of, sort of situated, and I want to call on two people here now. And I wanna call on two people here now, Doreen is gonna talk to us a little bit about the food trucks and the farmers market events.
The last Thursday of every month, we have a feast on the street. Uh, we've done it for two months now, we've had an awesome turnout, uh, the vendors are really excited, they've had a lot of customers, they've sold out the first time. Uh, this past time, I think, Go Go Home is might have sold out again. Uh, I went to Bursford this weekend, got some new vendors, so hopefully we're gonna have more. We also, every Thursday, after the Pavilion, but we will be moving it to College Street in front of Harton Park, we have a fresh mess, which is anything that is homemade, um, produce, canned goods, anything like that. So we're gonna move that up to College Street in front of the park, we did it last week, and the turnout was awesome, everybody enjoyed it, the weather was great, and so hopefully we can keep it going. In October, September, October, we're thinking about doing like a Fall Fest or a, uh, Oktoberfest, or we may have games up for kids, have some pumpkin carving or something like that, so we're working on it. But so far, it's done really good. Uh, we will start decorating for fall, September the twenty seventh. We should have all of our decorations up. And Employee Day is September the sixteenth. Everyone's invited to that.
Employees and families.
Employees and families.
And they get half the day outside too, I mean.
What, is that correct?
Yeah. Well, all day if they can, if they can be on.
And that's all I got.
Are you gonna do the Christmas night?
Well, we did, we got Shop Local.
I think the reason.
July twenty fifth?
I think the reason she didn't recommend it is because the C two corridor is so long, it goes all the way to Suwannee. Rightly.
Right.
And she thought that if we did it by the special exception, it would limit and not, you wouldn't have just a long string of apartments.
So each special exception is gonna come up and we go to, go through the planning commission first and then to the city?
BCA.
And to the, no, to the BCA.
And into what, oh, the, the zones.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it just seems like it violates the first definition that was put in the definition of C two. I mean, reasonably be located elsewhere is pretty much identifies apartments can be identified anywhere.
So I think it, it, it brings up a, a good point and Dean brought it up several months ago, is that our current zoning map very likely has too much commercial and not enough residential in it. And that's why we were talking last month and, and I'll, I'll bring it up again about doing a general plan and having, and reviewing our whole zoning map. Um, but I think in the meantime, what this allows us to do is recognizing that. So we've got some C two that's in some mixed residential areas. So this allows us to look on a case by case basis and say, okay, is this C two really, um, i- is it really where we want our, our commercial or is it something we should look at? I think in a perfect world, we would have already done that zoning, re- re- relooked at that zoning map, but for various reasons, we haven't yet. And, and I think this gives the planning commission on a case by case basis, the opportunity to do that. But I think you're right, I don't, I don't think any, anybody is saying, we wanna plop a, a, an apartment in the middle of our downtown commercial corridor.
Right.
Um, and that's, that's why we, we made it so that it's by special exception only.
Unfortunately, I'm a little cynical about, once the door is open, the case by case is, is a little easier, actually, even becomes much easier.
I understand that.
And that's the reason we had a public hearing earlier, I mean, just, we had a public hearing earlier, right, discuss these issues and now we're at the point that we're at, it's cause somebody spoke up during the public hearing. I mean, but we will note this and it's on record, that these are your concerns with, with the ordinance, I mean, and we appreciate it, but that's the reason we had, this is, had a public hearing.
You make the suggestion that we only do like certain percent of it and we went check on that, we can't do that, and that's why we went by.
It's spot zoning is what they say. But they did bring up a good point, that we do, we're continuing the corridor plan, which we started when we came, we only have ten thousand dollars for land use person and that's not gonna pay for it. And we do have to pursue that with getting someone to do the land use, so we can complete the corridor plan. So, uh, there's multiple facets going on and getting done as we do them. But ten thousand dollars is not going to hire the consultant we need for the land use plan, we've already said, mentioned the adversity fifty, seventy-five thousand. We can't get that, but we've got to get a consultant.
So I, I wrote an RFP and at the last meeting, we were talking about having Chad here and looking at that together and it worked out.
And Chad hasn't been able to come in.
Okay, so, man, I think that's, that's really the solution, is, is to look at the zoning map and figure it out, because if, if you change the, if you have good invalid reasons for changing the zoning map, it's not spot zoning. And, and, and that's, that's really the key here, is to understand what Montego needs and be able to come up with a zoning map that matches the needs of the community.
What's the timeline on that?
Uh, well, we've got, Chad, you thought that Chad Reed was the planning, the planner, as soon as he can come over to meet with us and we can schedule workshop, we only have ten thousand dollars in the budget to hire the person. So we will be seeing what we, who we can hire with that, and we've gotta come up with more funds to have that expert in that field to come and work with us, so.
So the planning talks about the zoning and then it goes to the zoning and then it goes back to planning and then it comes here?
Yeah, so, wha- at least.
I don't know what you're saying.
Well, you were talking about the planning, but then they.
We're talking about the corridor plan for land use would be identified in that, which we had before, that was abandoned. Down here, see this, our protecto rimming, it would be similar to that. Right here, that's what we're trying to get back at, and that was abandoned, and so we're trying to come up with that again with land use. So right now, we do have a need for affordable housing, and that was the reason this was being addressed that way, it was actually supposed to been done last year. And, um, this language was left out of the ordinance, so we're, we're fixing an error that we actually did not, um, address properly in the ordinance. So we have to go back and re- and, and include that language.
It, it came up last year as a general change to the zoning ordinance and several of us didn't feel comfortable making a blanket change to allow apartments in a C two, so we brought it back as special exception.
So.
But, but to answer your question, what, what, the RFP that, that I have been working on is, is taking something that Bradley County did and it basically, it looks at what Travis has done, the Trav- the work that Travis has already done, our water and sewer. Um, it looks at, um, public input to, to, to ask the citizens, what, what is it that we feel like we need? It looks at things like the corridor plan and it, it helps us make decisions on where we need to change our zoning. And I think that's, that's a more comprehensive solution than, than this, but given that we, that hasn't happened yet, this is a way that we can, in a very controlled manner, uh, evaluate it on a parcel by parcel basis.
And it's legal to do.
And it's, it's legal to do.
Yes, so. Well, really, we need to deal with this if we lose citizens in, we're gonna face here, unless you wanna come up and, and we can do a three minute thing, I mean, y'all can go ahead, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Oh, I, I was just, I was just gonna speak in, in favor of, of this particular, um, resolution and I think it seems like it came up, one of the reasons it came up was because of Dean Lay's property next to Clifton. And, you know, recognizing the need for affordable housing and doing something positive with that property, so, I mean, wasn't that one of the pieces that was seriously under consideration that seemed to fit? I mean, there it is, right from the Clifton's residential, you know, would you rather have people living there? All these professors and visiting professors from Suwannee, they would kill to be in an apartment right now, you know, there's no place for, so, um.
But there's locals that need housing too.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of.
And we need to grow.
To be somewhere to live.
We need to grow our population a little bit, you know, so that we keep the mom and pop operations open, so.
So, that's the reason we put special exceptions in here, so do we have a motion on the second, um, reading of ordinance number eleven twenty-two?
I make the motion?
Well.
We approve ordinance eleven dash twenty-two.
And do we have a second? Uh, all in favor, uh, opposed? That's all. Okay, so that ordinance passed with the language of special exceptions. Now, next we have, um, I'm gonna clarify this, uh, for terms of office, the first reading ordinance, ordinance twelve twenty-two. This ordinance clarifies the ordinance of zero seven twenty-one, which changed the town's ten year to the office, to staggering term. We had four year terms with a staggering term of two year terms, the former administration changed it back to two tier terms only. We changed it back to four year terms, which would say, the mayor and four council people would be elected. The way it read, we were called by the Marion County Election Commission, the Grunde County Election Commission, the Franklin County Election Commission, they also contacted the state election commissioner and air attorney. And I'll explain why, I'm gonna have to go through that process in a moment, because the way it read, the mayor and the top two vote getters were defined. But then the language said, the lowest two vote getters would serve only two years. According to the confusion, according to the state and all three of the election commissions which were involved, they felt like there was clarification. TCA code says the acting attorney will be the one that defines that definition. Air attorney was called and he said, there's seven people that are running for council. The way it read then, the top two would be elected, the bottom two would have been elected, which really makes no sense. So this clears it up, the top four will be elected, two will serve four years with the mayor, and two will serve two years. Because as you can see, we've tried to accomplish a lot and it takes a lot when you're dealing with state and federal entities to get it completed. So this is clarification that the top four vote getters, and then we're talking Alderman, will be those elected. And then the, the top two that received the most votes will serve four years. The bottom two will receive a two year term and it'll start staggering. So, everybody can.
The next pass will get two, two years.
Two year term and then they'll have to ru- run again, and then the staggering will begin. So that's the change for this ordinance, we need to change before the election, yes ma'am?
So, the two year terms would become four year terms after?
Yeah, after they rotate, yes ma'am, after we go through that, that two year cycle, so that would be twenties, this is what, twenty-two, so that'd be twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, so.
Okay.
Actually, what, twenty, twenty, twenty-five? No, so, yeah, that, that would change it to a four year cycle, then it'll be four and two on those terms. So, anyway, that's the change and the clarification because Tennessee code annotated says that the acting attorney will make this decision, and this is what Sam said we needed to do before the election. So that's what this is, clarification of that ordinance.
And I make a motion to approve, twelve twenty-two.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
That was done. Oh, good, so we went through grants. Okay, I think we've covered all the ordinances, is that correct? Oh, the resolutions have been covered, so the other thing we're going to address, and they brought up a good point, which we can identify this, we were contacted by one of the banks, which is Mountain Valley. They have one CD that's one million seventy-five thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-two six cents, pardon me. It is currently on a interest rate for point four five. So approximately we're getting four thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents without any penalties. The new terms would be, they could change this this upcoming week, to a new interest rate of two point nine zero. And the earnings of approximately, approximately thirty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents totaling in three years. Of course, it would be compound interest, so it would be, would be more, the sum of ninety-three thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-six cents instead of what, the fourteen thousand that we're currently getting on those terms. Uh, Nate, I know you had an issue with the, with the tank being repaired, which I agree. However, uh, we can clarify this with the CPA and auditor, uh, that we were told in one of our workshops that we have to keep X amount of funds in a retention. I agree with you, we had a depreciation fund that was real, that was abandoned, I wanna get to, we got it again, but we got to get to what we can do then. When I say depreciation, real dollars and cents to replace these things, that's what we're working toward. However, that would be the difference in the large CD in which we have. We also have a second CD, which the balance in that is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. The current rate for that is twelve months at point one zero. So we're earning approximately a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. The new terms would be one point five, uh, earning approximately three thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. So if we go ahead and do this, there's no penalty, if we cannot remove the reserves till we pare say, with a caveat that you were asking, with the auditor CPA. I would say, and of course I can't make a motion, but it would be almost insane that we don't go ahead and do this without a penalty because we're going from twelve thousand to a hundred thousand dollars a year that we're gonna be making in thirty-six months. And we're going from a hundred and eighty-seven dollars to four thousand in a year that we're now, so that's quite a bit of difference, if we go ahead and change it without a penalty if we go ahead and do this now.
Do you have to roll over the whole amount of the one million plus? They won't let you.
No, it's one CD for thirty-six months, but I mean, it's, you know.
So it seems like there are three pieces of information we're missing to make a decision on this. One is X, you said it yourself, we have to keep X in our reserve account.
But this is called reserves in a CD.
But we don't know what X is, we don't know whether that is less than, equal to, or more than.
But we can find that out, let's find out what X is.
We need to know X.
Okay.
And once we know X, then that will help us determine how much of that we could be able to take out. The, the second question I had is, i- i- if, if it has to all go into a C, into a CD, why would we not combine them and get two point four nine on both of them? Uh, that's another question I would have.
Well, that question, we'll have to defer it to Debbie, because this was put in CDs, I know this was changed.
And the, the last question that we need to get the answer to is what?
She's the CFO.
What is the penalty for early withdrawal? Because if.
It says no penalty for.
That, that is the penalty if we change these CDs early and, and move them into a new CD with the same bank. That's a difference from the early withdrawal penalty, if we find we have to fix the water tower and we have to pull it out of a CD, then there's gonna be a penalty for early withdrawal. If we don't know that number, we can't weigh the risk of rolling it into this new CD.
Okay, with the caveat, and we know how the feds are doing and we know that we're ready, that interest rates are increasing and, and these are going to flush, flush away, correct? Is there caveat you wanna put on to make this changes, or do you wanna gamble until, uh, until next month and see what happens? I mean, we may not.
I think the chairman of the fed just said that interest rates will continue to go up, so I think it would probably be better next month. But again, I'd like to know, what is the total amount we need in reserve?
Can you write that down, she's the CFO, wait a minute, let her get this stuff.
What is the total amount we need in reserve? What is the penalty for early withdrawal? So if we put it in this CD and we have to use it to fix a water tank, how much are we gonna have to pay?
If we can pull it out.
We, we can, they'll charge us, but we can pull it out. And then the, the third question is, can we simply roll both of these over into a single CD at the higher interest rate?
And. The third thing, if there's a third CD, we need to know what it is and how much that amount is, because these are going to, that one I was calling about, and I asked for this information to present it to not.
I'm, I'm all about making more interest, I just don't, I don't wanna, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot if, because we know we've got some maintenance needs that are deferred and we've been unsuccessful in finding grants, so.
Well, that's, well, we've not been unsuccessful in finding grants.
Grants for maintenance.
No, it's not maintenance, it's repair, we should have already done this, if we'd done our maintenance, we wouldn't be in this position. Let's clarify, it'd be like not changing oil in your car for like two years and then hopefully it's still up, that's sort of the situation, I mean.
So we gotta change the old venture.
Yeah, and that's where we're at now, that's what I'm saying, but there's a difference in maintenance and repairs, so. All right, that's that, the other thing I want to mention, if anybody's interested in, uh, I went to a, um, fall and zup, fall advisory meeting at the school, it's been a couple I've been to. And one of the things they mentioned, if any of you are interested, uh, they have a grandparents day, and I mentioned it to my husband and I don't know if we're gonna be able to or not, but if some of those kids over there don't have grandparents. And if anybody wants to, they can go to the principal, it's only like two, three hours out of your day. And you can adopt, they can, the kids can adopt the grandparent. And that way, whenever that they go, you go sit with them and you go, they're gonna have a storyteller there, and, you know, it's just gonna be something, if anybody wants to do it, they can actually contact Ms. Clark or call the school and they can arrange this. Of course, they do, of course, check you in and check you out, they, I mean, they just don't let people run randomly and wildly to school. But it's a really good, good thing, because some kids don't have grandparents, so if anybody's interested in going over there and maybe volunteering, they might want to do that, I'm pointing, they don't want to. You don't wanna be.
Grandparents.
It's only one day, it's on September the ninth, so, but ahead of time, when you're talking to Ms. Veronica, and when you get the information, they put it online, if somebody wants to contact her, it'd be really neat, you know. And you can, you might even have three or four kids to sit with, but if you can do that for the kids, that's a good thing to do. So I think that is all, now we'll go to the citizens' comments and, um, do the citizens have a comment? Yes, would you please come up front, Mr. Lee?
Good one. He's not a citizen, he's a professional.
You got three minutes, sir.
Well, I got two topics, so.
Okay.
Uh, first was on planning commission, uh, uh, here for the planning commission, last meeting Debbie, I guess, with minor subdivision, uh, and bragged about the planning commission expediting that. And I got my signatures and brought it to City Hall, uh, of course, bonded with Anya, and she said I needed two changes and Mike Barry made those changes, so. I got the signature, brought them up here, gave them to Debbie and asked her to get them to Anya, and that was over a week and a half ago, so anyway, I think, and I haven't heard anything, and Debbie told me today that Anya's on vacation.
No, she hasn't.
And, and so my point is, I thought we were doing real good, but I don't know where we are on that, so I don't, I don't, I don't wanna talk about that, cause I wanna talk about something else in three minutes.
Okay, okay, we'll just get to that.
On apartments, if, if, if my research and, and, in, in doing apartment, is, is most apartments are, you form an entity, uh, it can be LLC or corporation or whatever, seldom is it an individual. And, and so then you, if I'm, if I'm doing that, I'm gonna do it probably in LLC, which is a company, which some people equate with a business. Then I'm gonna come to City Hall and ask for a water tap, and if that's a two inch water tap, you don't know how much they're gonna charge me, but it's gonna be at the commercial rate. And, and, and that's fine, uh, but again, commercial rate means it's business, okay? And, and I would prefer to be charged at cost plus, that's what it used to be, so if, if it costs me less because of my property and there's a water line on my property, then I don't want to supplement your tap fee if there's more work involved in it. But, but that's just a small thing, that's, you know, uh, the other thing is, is, uh, when I get a tax bill from Marion County, it's gonna be taxed at the commercial rate. So, so it's a commercial entity, it's a commercial water bill in Zurbill, and it's a commercial tax bill. So, so why do you wanna stick in a residential?
Why are we sticking in a residential?
Yes, you were, I'm right now, it's twelve before tonight.
No, but I know, we need that.
Basically, I'm, and, and it is, is referring to what Nancy was saying.
Okay.
It is, apartments are a business, just like any other business that's in commercial zones.
I don't know, why would, I mean, I can't answer that question, you might can answer it, were you there when the ones, right where you, we both have to pass to go home, what are those called, Montego? No, what is, what is, what is?
You speak with the bridge, yeah.
What is Wood and Ridge, why were they putting residential community?
Uh, cause it was required.
Well, then that's what I'm saying, I don't know, you would.
It's twenty-four units and it's all sorts of.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but.
And safety with ingress and egress, but anyway, you're only three minutes here.
Yeah.
Uh, my, 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 what I want you to think about is that this apartment is a business. Uh, i- i- if, if there's ultimately forty-eight or seventy-two or whatever, uh, that's a business.
The unit, the unit is a business, yes.
Yeah, but, but yet, uh, before tonight, you were saying, oh, you have to be in a, what, arthridge or whatever? That makes no sense to me.
Because it's based on use, it is a business, but it's based on residential use.
Yes.
So I have a rental property in a residential zone.
You have one unit, which is single family dwelling or a duplex.
And I admit it's a business.
Right.
But it is a residential.
And you go to every joint in town and there's apartments in commercial zones. From Manchester to Oklahoma, to South Pittsburgh, to Jasper, uh, they're in commercial zones.
And that's the reason tonight, and that's the reason why we could change in it with special exception, that we might not.
He's three minutes.
Well, he can have.
And then if you can check on, uh, uh, about my, minor subdivision, because it's, it's back on track.
Well, no, it wasn't on track, that was on my question, I don't know if Anya got it, did you give it to her? Well, I'm done it today, we'll email her before the, the non-subject, we'll text her, see what the status is.
So I don't know, I mean, she may, I, I don't know, she, I, I made the corrections that she asked for.
Okay.
But I wanted her to see those corrections, and, and so I brought, what, six copies left at City Hall, and Debbie said she would get her a copy that day. And, and, uh, that's been a week and a half ago, and, and to me, that's more than apple down to, uh, to, to say it's okay and send it to the secretary of the planning.
I'll just text her and not, I'll text her and not next to her.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You got it?
Anyone else? You wanna?
Yep.
This is really, this is really a question, I think, for Travis, and I'm sorry, I'm just a little unclear on you, we're talking about water capacity. Does that have anything to do with the reservoirs capacity?
That's what the treatment plant can treat.
Okay, so you really, you didn't evaluate whether or not our source water Laurel Lake could actually support X number of four water taps or uses?
Your, your treatment plant is already sized to point nine NGD, so it already has that capacity, so we didn't evaluate anything above what the treatment plant can already treat.
Okay. So you, so basically, your study doesn't have anything to do with whether we might be in danger of a drought if a distillery comes in? Or if we do X number of tiny homes, or, you're not, you're not looking at that?
As long as it falls within the point nine four that the treatment plant can already treat, drought conditions are very, I mean, they're variable, they're arbitrary. Uh, the town has multiple water sources that, other than the lake, that they can tie into, so.
What?
That is source water and that's a whole other cup of tea that was not part of this cup of the state.
Okay, it's not, I do think that whether or not drought is going to be a problem for us, as it has been in the past, is a real concern. So I just wanted to make sure that when you were talking about seventy percent capacity remaining, that wasn't anything to do with how much water is in Laurel Lake?
No, that is another.
And, and then I heard a rumor that the city had been denying water taps to people who, in Eagle Bluff, because of not enough.
What happened, no, that's, well, let's clear up some rumors here.
Yeah.
Okay. We were having a capacity test done to see what capacity we have for the corporate city limits and, and which accordance to Intas and to GCA code and everyone, that's where we have to set this first, the city limits. Now, at that time, until this capacity test was returned, we were not doing it, there was nothing to do with a drought. And so there was also put on Facebook that we had a drought, and I wish John was here, but, um, they can speak to this, that we had a, the rest area closed a couple of weekends ago because of a drought. That is incorrect, what happened on the El Bridge, the pot burst on a Friday afternoon, after it did burst, it was repaired, it burst again, and after that, John did not have the materials to fix it, nor did the staff. So they contacted the rest areas and fixed it on Monday, but someone decided to go back and pull an article, which was put on Facebook, and say that it was because of a drought, and said they would run with it until that was changed, which that is all rumors and incorrect. And, so, that, that neither one of those were correct.
So, is, but is there a study afoot, or could there be a study, on the real capacity that we have in terms of whether or not we might be in trouble if we push our developments and get bigger and bigger? We have hotels coming in, and we've got apartments, and we've got tiny homes, we've got truck stop, I mean, do we need to look at?
Travis, can we ask you, when our plant not fit the size of our water basin, isn't that usually the way they're sized, so to be able to?
My understanding is the, the current treatment plant capacity is sized accordingly to accommodate your water source.
So that would.
So again, the, the taps, or not even the taps, but the percent remaining is based on your current capacity of your plant, which, in my understanding, has, has been sized accordingly to the size of the water source.
As we have evidently suffered from droughts here before.
And we have now an interconnection with, uh, Big Creek, which was done during the drought season, and that's already connected, we can get a water source from that as well as multiple other sources, and as, as Travis has said, can you determine where the next drought's gonna be? Do you know what it's gonna be?
Be sure, be sure.
Oh, it's happening out west now, actually, he checked it today, because that was mentioned and we are not in a drought mode right now.
But we will be.
That's the reason we have other connections and other means, and we start observing more.
Okay, um, and then the other thing was that, speaking of Facebook, there were some, what I would call somewhat disparaging comments about, um, Mr. Waller's credentials as a professional engineer. And I just wanted to share his resume, when you all say you would have it and know.
We have his resume, and we can pass that around, but the thing is, are you an, an environmental engineer, Mr. Waller?
No, I'm not an environmental engineer, and what I have been, uh, stating in my hydrological study is not related to environmental engineering, it's related to civil.
You should come up.
Civil engineering, environmental engineering is a, a unique, uh, field of engineering, having to do with the, uh, content of the water, sewage or whatever. Um, it would be something that Travis Wilson's company would be capable of being involved in, but, uh, the study of. but, uh, the study of, hydrological study of, um, a property for rainwater runoff would not require an environmental engineer.
But our information did come from our engineering firm, and that's how we will be talking about, and that's where those comments were actually. And we're not despairing anything, we're just saying there's different types of engineers, like having a heart surgeon and a O B Y doctor, there's two different doctors there, and so there's expertise, and we do have a staff that does deal with this directly. They are environmental engineers.
No, and that's, that's wonderful, but it's also incredibly wonderful, we're so lucky to have Mr. Waller in this community.
We're not saying we're not.
He's not charging anything, but he's doing this because he's really truly concerned.
And where, where's this information going and coming from?
The information about, about him being a structural engineer.
No, actually, that came from a response from our engineer and our attorney and from INTAS, the response that we provided. So those were documented, and we are now in a lawsuit again, being sued, uh, per the, uh, appeals court.
It has nothing to do with Mr. Waller or with me.
And it has, uh, not at all, it's nothing to do. So then what, what's your statement have to do, because nobody said anything despairing on Facebook.
You disparaged Mr. Waller on Facebook.
How did we do that?
Uh-uh.
I mean, you can, you.
You write it.
No, are you talking about the response?
I'm saying you put a letter on Facebook on four different, on the town meeting, on the mayor's site, on community news and the bulletin board, and you questioned Mr. Waller's credentials, saying that he was more of a structural engineer, not a civil engineer. So I'm just giving you his resume with his credentials, so.
Well, I mean, that's fine, but he just said he was a structural engineer, so there's no, well, nobody's doing anything despairing.
Disparaging.
Is that, yes. We're not, no, no, we're not, nobody was.
Certainly was, but, okay.
Did you have something?
I'm really going to clarify what I am. I guess, uh, designing, uh, sewage stations and commutators and all that, and, uh, designing the, uh, primary drainage system from Miami International Airport, your opinion, might be considered a structural engineer.
Sorry, I don't, no, I'm not getting into what you designed and they've designed, I'm not an engineer, I'm just going from their experience.
Well, and if you look at my resume, you'll see that not only did I practice civil engineering in addition to structural engineering, but my graduate work included, uh, several subjects, thirteen subjects in civil engineering related to drainage, sewage, water supply, wells, dams, and all of that. I'm just clarifying that I'm not blowing smoke when I tell you the hydrological report I gave to you at your request under Mr. Wilson is a valid engineering study, and I, Mr. Wilson, I'll ask, could you read that?
How do you?
Did your staff have any objections to the, the, uh, report, the results?
Uh, yes, we, we did not see how it was substantiated, that the pictures in the report substantiated claims of, of deposition from that specific site entering Laurel Lake.
Yeah, well, I used TR fifty-five, I used TR fifty-five, uh, hydrological, uh, uh, procedure for urban watershed, that's pretty standard for civil engineering. And, uh, the, the report indicated there were nine point eight billion gallons of water in a ten-year mean return interval storm that would run off from that property in twenty-four hours. Which, with an eighteen-inch diameter pipe leading into the Montego Storm Source System, it can't push that much water through in twenty-four hours, it's going to flood. Okay, you mentioned flooding is not a problem, you didn't mention contamination. One of the main sources of hydrocarbon pollution in the United States, uh, in urban areas comes from places where they have refueling stations, truck plazas, uh, car parks and, and that sort of thing, where you have paving, where you don't have any infiltration into the soil, where you don't get any treatment there. The, um, Senator Associates, um, plan, their erosion control plan didn't have, have any provisions for, or retention of any of that water. If you look at the ponds, they're full now, any rain coming on that property is going to flow out the discharge pipes into the Montego Storm Sources, it has no other place to go. If it's paved, it'll be worse than what it is now. Right now, we've got a, almost like a red dye, uh, trail telling us where that pollution is going to go. It's going to be hydrocarbons instead of silt, it's going to be on top of the water instead of, um, precipitating out in Laurel Lake, then it's going to be a problem for the sewage treatment, uh, the sewage treatment, the water treatment facility to handle. And it's a major problem. Now, I understand that building permit for the RBT, uh, properties, RBT properties expired. If it has, and I, I believe by law it has, they need to submit a new application for a permit to build on that property, and it needs to include a site plan which complies with the ordinance of this town, which includes in section one thousand eight Q requirement that rainwater, stormwater has to be collected and treated, and that has to be proved to the, the planning commission. And I'm requesting that this be done and reviewed by your town engineer if you don't have the capability of determining whether that is going to eliminate pollution going into Laurel Lake, our primary watershed project. Thank you.
I, I will respond to the comments.
Okay, well, you want to come up to the line, so we can actually, or you want to use your free?
Um, I'm, I'm just reading from, uh, the August fifth TDEC report, which is, uh, based on their inspection, which I think is four or five days following the, the last largest rain event. Uh, TDEC is the regulator over pollution and not flooding, so just, just to be clear, TDEC has responsibility of pollution control, uh, not flood control, so they're there, um, looking for pollution, um, to the environment, whether that be contaminants or sediments runoff. And so their comments on August fifth are no sediment disposition was observed at the outfalls around the silt pens or in roadside ditches. Cloudy water was flowing from the lowest sediment trap, but sediment was not observed to be depositing offsite. There are a few maintenance items that need to be addressed, cleaning out the silt fence, additional temporary stabilization, better stabilization to the swell. Nearly two-thirds of the wetland has vegetation growing, additionally, planning, additional planning may be required in the remainder thirty-foot buffer inside the silt fence, um, in the boundary. So according to an inspection of a, of a TDEC inspector, several days after the largest rain event, they indicate that there was no deposition, deposition offsite, um, from, just right outside the, the construction site. So, um, the Laurel Lake, from the, the, the path that you indicated in your report, which we agree with, uh, travels under the road and down the road, and then overland flow, uh, down the ravines until it finally, uh, reaches a named tributary, uh, next to Laurel Lake. Uh, that's a little over a mile and a quarter away, uh, overland flow. So if TDEC was there a few days after that large event, I don't know what the intended duration is of that specific event. Uh, it was over three inches in twenty-four hours, I'm sure it was, it was, uh, in shorter time than twenty-four hours. So probably much larger than ten-year event, um, if we looked at some I V F curves on that. But if they saw no evidence of, of deposition offsite just a few days after, then indication would be that that silt traveling over a mile away would not be deposited in the lake. Not to say that there's not cloudy water there, because they didn't catch that, so. So cloudy water and, and silt particles and deposition are two different things, and, and so carry, flow carrying silt and maintaining solids, uh, through a liquid, uh, to travel that distance, um, through ditches and channels that are trees and forested, then that, that silt tends to fall out, and so, uh.
It doesn't.
That lake is, I got a thousand photos, I got a thousand photos.
So according to TDEC, who is the regulatory agency of the state of Tennessee, indicated that there were no deposition offsite after that event. And so that's, that's their words, that's on the website, um, that, that, I wasn't there and didn't see it, I'm just reading what the regulators of the state of Tennessee indicated in their report.
Well, exhibit fourteen of my report shows photographs of the silting Laurel Lake, that's irrefutable.
And while also Laurel Lake is, uh, the watershed's about twelve hundred acres, and so RBT is about fifteen acres, so that's about one percent of the area within that drainage basin. So other areas from the drainage basin also drain through that, and so.
We, we showed photography on what we call Hidden Creek, we showed it going into the entry points at the eighteen-inch diameter pipe, as, as muddy water. Coming out of the outfall of that pipe into Hidden Creek as muddy water. Going down over the waterfalls of Hidden Creek as muddy water, and showing it into the lake. You're saying it comes from X acres outside of the eighteen acres we're talking about, that just doesn't make any sense.
I mean, I, I'm not going to argue those details with you, because neither you nor I were there and can substantiate.
Oh, yes, we can.
What, what deposition was where things were coming from.
Well, we took the pictures, they said we were there.
So Travis, not to, I don't want.
Excuse me, we've got someone here, honey.
Okay, I just want, I just want to clarify, he's on talking about the TDEC, was that August fifth, did they?
Yes.
Well, I believe the rain was July thirtieth.
That's right.
So they didn't come.
That's not soon enough.
Yeah, they didn't come to see it until things dried up.
And when it rains, the red dirt from the construction is, uh, pass over it constantly every time it's raining. And it's the red dirt.
Yeah, well, construction out there is part of it too, is what he said, it comes from multiple sources.
Not at the point where I'm going across the small bridge, it comes from that little creek.
One place.
And it is red clay, dirt, I grew up in Alabama, I know what it looks like. Um, but my, my other question is, or comment, can we not determine by averaging, um, a two-bedroom apartment, the water usage, and then determine, okay, we can only handle this much more water usage, so we only allow a twenty-unit apartment building?
We're good. We, we can, that's what the, the study that Travis went over did exactly that.
Okay.
And so there, there are state standards for each use, whether it's a hotel room or a, an apartment.
Okay, I didn't hear that part.
He didn't, he didn't go into that, he kind of presented to us that, yes, there's a certain point that we have to buy more water, and I'm talking under normal circumstances, we do not control droughts like we do tornadoes and other things, you know, those are acts of, acts of God, you know, in nature, not us. But yes, there is a state said, we know X amount of hotel rooms.
Guy, go.
We already have that information.
To make those decisions.
Yes.
That's what I want.
And we do have that capacity test, Travis, to clarify one thing, you just, because these will be addressed again and over, but you did say, even in that bad water they're talking about, there's more than one source.
You let someone put a propylene glycol in there, you see who comes up here.
And that's important, what you said Travis, is that it is a construction, it's a sweat permit for during construction. We're, our concerns about pollution are just being shown by the red clay in the waterways that are going to Laurel Lake. Once the red clay is replaced with hydrocarbons, we have something that doesn't settle out.
I'm going to ask one question, and then this could go forever, and I think we do see your concerns, so you're saying all the red clay is coming from one piece of property, which is RBT, you're going to record stating that?
Yes, yes, we have, we have the cheap gas documentation, the photos.
No, I'm just saying.
And TDEC sent you a letter, TDEC sent you a certified letter that you had to sign for stating they're polluting Laurel Lake. You got that letter, I got that letter, Mr. Waller got that letter, y'all got a copy of that letter, so did you, and it specifically says that that site is polluting waters of the state, you got it, you got it.
You don't get it.
You got it a long time ago, it's not recent.
My issue is, I live in this town, and I'm concerned about the drinking water for all the folks that live in this town. You know, I don't care who going to put a business in.
I'm saying it's every source.
I just don't want people to blow smoke up my butt trying to get something in here if the drinking water is polluted.
But isn't that why it goes through a treatment plant?
Excuse me?
Isn't that why it goes through a treatment plant?
That water, I'll agree with Mr. Waller, that water is supposed to be treated when it leaves a little sediment out here. That water is supposed to be a certain temperature before it leaves that, the little, uh, settlement pond out here, it goes to the branch going to Laurel Lake. If that water is not a certain temperature, it's not supposed to go into that lake. It's supposed to have distributors there that make sure that water is a certain temperature before it goes into that lake down there.
So Tony, when y'all approved this, and we had to go back and redo this, because y'all actually approved this the first time.
They did not approve.
But it did not.
It has not been approved, I, you know, you tried to say it was approved, but I think you stored about four Pinocchios on that.
No, it wasn't me, it was there.
Approved.
There was an ordinance that was approved for this site prior, we had to go back and redo it, correct? Because it was done in three days, we can, we can document that.
Document it.
But, so there's no Pinocchios, but the thing was, so you did, you addressed these issues then? Because you're saying, I'm just wondering, did you know you're bringing up the issue?
This didn't come up at that time, because they weren't out there digging them ha, you know, ponds at that time.
Okay.
So I, I think.
Okay, um, I just wanted to add what my wife said, uh, you know, we live with three houses past the lake on Laurel Lake Drive, and it doesn't take a very hard rain before you see muddy water coming down the creek, going under that first bridge into the lake. Now, it'll, there will be some, I see it running down the ditch in front of our house too, and, and then on down, you know, below Chicory, and then sometimes that water gets pretty muddy too, but it doesn't take a hard rain at all for water coming in, I guess what's Hidden Creek, where it comes through the town. And it may be a mile, but it doesn't, it doesn't settle out, the sediment comes all the way down into the lake. And, um, I think that hep, that last heavy rain, didn't Sampley Street flood?
Yeah, a lot of water, almost, there was.
Had to have been a lot of water coming over this property that's not even paved yet, out of those retainage ponds that were there, over, in the, over the creek, so, you know, my two cents for whatever it's worth.
Can I say something, it, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not sure how helpful this argument is to the situation. I think everybody agrees that we want to have clean water going into Laurel Lake. I think, and, and so one of the things that the town is working on, based on recommendations from Travis, is that we put some stormwater regulations into place that'll address not only the sediment, but also the hydrocarbons within the watershed, so we're working on those. They were not in place when this was approved. I thought that we had done a review on that, and that is my fault, I take culpability for that because I didn't ask the right questions, and so I, 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 I want to be involved in asking the right questions now, and I, I would agree. And I, I would agree that we don't want to see cloudy water going into Laurel Lake. That letter that Travis read for, from August fourth, is about them stabilizing the site, because they've not done construction activity. So, they're now having to stabilize the site and, and stop that from happening. Um, so we're, we're working on, and the state is working on, coming up with some solutions. That we, I've had conversations with several people about the difference between sediment and turbidity. Turbidity is bad. We, we can treat turbidity in a wastewater treatment plant, but it increases our cost of water treatment, so we don't want turbidity. So we want to be dealing with this. If they can get that site revegetated, I think we'll deal with it. And in the meantime, if we can pass some reasonable stormwater regulations to protect the watershed, then I think we can all be moving in, in the right, in the right direction. And I'm happy that Mr. Waller has brought it to our attention, even if, you know, we recognize maybe there were some shortcomings in how that report was put together, it was still a real issue. So I, I don't want to belittle what he did, um, and, and nitpick details. I want to say, let's, let's figure it out, and Travis is working on that, and, and our attorney is working on that. And I hope that we'll have you some stormwater regulations that we can review coming up shortly.
And those will apply to ever commercial and residential, he's a pro.
The hook will also hold into the ordinances.
Everybody will be helped to the same.
That Jim mentioned.
Everybody will be helped to do that ordinance.
Well, and, and that current ordinance says adequately treated, and that's its definition. So, it, that, what we need to do is have some more definition, and that's what we're working on.
Is the retention on adequate treatment is the big question.
It's obvious.
Or it needs further, from the, you know, treatment before it goes down the creek.
The state said it's adequate for sediment, but whether that's adequate for our terms, I don't know.
Let me just say, in, in that report, which you, you seem to find fault with, but I haven't gotten any, any response from Mr. Wilson. It does say there is no pre-treatment at the fueling stations, no, no trenches to capture fuel spills and separate the fuel from, uh, any rainwater that might be coming out.
And that's a different issue.
That's pre-treatment, that, that's what's needed to keep it from getting into the runoff.
And that's an issue that we need to deal with when we look at stormwater and first flush contaminants within the watershed. That is absolutely correct.
You need to do it with this particular project, when, when you review the site plan, when it comes back, to make sure you have pre-treatments. Otherwise, all these people are saying we're getting muddy water in there, you're gonna have hydrocarbons.
And that, and that may be possible. There is a lot of water to yet flow over the detention basin to know how that's gonna turn out.
I would add, if there's, if they revise the site plan and it includes a wash bay for the trucks, they have to put in oil-water separation, that's stay long.
A wash basin, I believe, would have to go into the municipal system when it drives.
That's correct.
It would not, we would not be allowed to go.
But also, they have to be treated on the property. I used to work at a truck dealership, and we had to put one in. TDEC came down on us pretty hard when I was there, because we didn't have it, so.
Truck stops are hotspots. Because they should be, they should be monitored. Don't be saying they shouldn't be monitored correctly. But, at this point, we've discussed this, Travis has, you've discussed this, other people have done this. Again, we will be discussing it more. Uh, I don't know if the, the permit is expired or not, Mr. Waller, we will check on that tomorrow. I don't know where you got your information, but we will clarify that. Uh, because we have, but I'm just saying, those things can be identified and will be. But no one, no person, no commercial, no residential will be treated differently regardless of opinions. And it will be followed to the way to protect the residents totally, with drinking water, with sewer, with everything that we're doing, and we will continue to do that. So, does anyone else have anything else counsel, Adam? You have it?
No.
Jessica, go rain.
I gotta go to work in the morning.
Okay.
I'll show you during.
I'll say.
All in favor?